It is 4:00 PM on August. It is 4:00 PM, August 16th, 2022. And this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. First item on the agenda is the Direct Assistance Update, Conversations with Johnson County. So I know the council know I went there last Tuesday to represent the collective voices of this council with the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. Of course, the topic at hand is the Direct Assistance Payments, where we submitted a letter, which I think many of you saw that letter, and the info packet where we were essentially asking the county to partner, to do 50%, while we do 50% of the 319 remaining. We had some collective discussions about why we wanted to do that. And at the end of the day, the county essentially said no to that proposal. I will say that I represent it to the best of our ability, I think, facts about the situation, which essentially talked about the resolution that was drafted between the county and the city, which states essentially that the county would do the lottery first, and after the lottery, any remaining individuals within the Iowa City jurisdiction would be paid for by the city. And so I did that. At this point, you'll, I know everyone saw in our formal agenda packet or on our agenda that we do have an item there with a resolution. So a part of my thinking was, I've heard the urgency in all of our voices to do what we can to move this process along. So I thought we would certainly have the discussion now about the update with Johnson County. And then should we choose to move forward based on the conversation here? With the agenda item later, we can either vote on it as it is written and make some adjustments based on our conversation now. We could defer it, we could remove it. But I thought in order for us to really be in a position to continue the conversation and make some movement, having the works, having this on the work session agenda and on the formal agenda would be the most, I think, the most productive way to keep us going forward. At this point, I'll just open it up for council discussion.
Well, I'll start. I was so excited and it was so wonderful to hear the initial plan to collaborate with the county for the Direct Assistance Program that would help to help those persons who hadn't qualified initially for the federal government stimulus checks. So it was very disheartening to me to hear that 319 individuals would not receive any of those funds. It seems that the numbers somehow just didn't come out right. And although I don't believe that 100% of the shortfall should be on Iowa City, I strongly believe that all persons who should have qualified for funding should indeed receive it. These are some of the most vulnerable members of our community, many of whom are now on the verge of further financial woes, being threatened by greedy out-of-state companies that have bought the mobile home courts where they live. These families are truly challenged financially, and this could help them to get their feet on the ground. Therefore, I believe that it is urgent that we agree on a plan to assure that the 319 individuals who would have qualified are indeed funded, and I would approve a resolution to do whatever it would take to accomplish that. The money's there, and we should be able to figure this out and do it as soon as possible.
I agree, Pauline. You know, I didn't really learn about the, you know, the distribution and fact that we had 319 who weren't going to be receiving the direct assistance. It was interesting to see, you know, where they were located. And it was also interesting to see, you know, how the various public entities had responded, you know, to the initial need. And my hope was that, at least my response at that time was, well, how can we bridge this gap? And that every, everyone, all the public entities would reassess where things were at that point. You know, we're now in a moment where we've seen what the response has been to that, to the situation we're in. And I too feel that Iowa City needs to fill the need and, if necessary, full it to its fullest extent. I wish it were otherwise. I had mentioned at our last meeting that I felt there was some possibility for a kind of a public-private partnership with this, where if we'd expended what we could in terms of the wealth of the public entities, that perhaps some of the wealth among ourselves and the Johnson County community could step forward. But at this point, I just don't think that's possible, unfortunately. So at this point, I do feel the City of Iowa City should contribute whatever is necessary to make this thing whole.
I would agree with that, wholeheartedly, 100%. I think that Pauline and John, you both have rightly put the emphasis on those who have been excluded. And Mayor, that we need to continue with urgency, it's gone on long enough. And honestly, as a human being, to you all, speaking on behalf of the 319, I am sorry that you have had to ask for it. Additionally, I would like to point out that the first time that we have heard about the potential for any collaboration from the county was August 11th. And it was suggested that, no, thank you, we've done our bit, you can go ahead and do that. We did enter into a largely successful collaboration with them for the majority of Johnson County residents, which includes Iowa City. We pay our taxes to Johnson County. I'm gravely disappointed that this became as political as it did and that in the process of this, that there were people who were left out and had to come here and fight for it. And I recognize the bureaucracy and the logistics of how this worked were such that we did fulfill our obligation, the county did theirs. But I would also note that we are the ones who actually said, let's try and get something done. And so I'm absolutely, positively behind making sure that we just put this to rest and get the people who deserve the money, their money. But I would also like to comment on, as I have already, but just to say that the narratives that have been put out here once this happened were not collaborative, were not done in the spirit of how do we make this whole, how do we make this right? It was completely political, and right now, that doesn't sit well with me. So I apologize for taking my time to talk about that part of it. It is possible to both absolutely say, the 319, you people who have been fighting and who are excluded, you matter more than my feelings about the political situation. But it is also possible to be angry about that. So I just had to get that out.
I'd like, basically, I agree with everything that's been set up here. Coming back from being out of town, I was very disappointed to see that our proposal to collaborate on the last 319 was met with a rejection. But that is what it is, and my disappointment over that certainly does not more important than the needs of the 319 people. So I'm on board with that. I do want to take a moment to thank the mayor for going and speaking on our behalf, on the city's behalf of this proposal and sitting through that meeting. And I'd also like to thank city staff for the work that they've put into this program from the very beginning to try and get this, get this working and work through all the intricacies of intergovernmental agreements, which are, you know, I've learned in the last six months, are more complicated than they appear from the outside. And that's our issues to deal with, not the public's. And so I agree, we need to move forward with this and get people that help that they've been looking for.
Just jump in, I agree with my colleagues that what needs to happen is those who are eligible for the program where the funds had been allocated would be paid the $1,400. It is incredibly frustrating how this has unfolded, and I hope that it is lessons learned, particularly, again, echoing what Sean, you said of thank you to our staff for working through this. And I know it has not been a straightforward or simple process, and it seems like when it became very political, it got more complex as well. I do think that, given that this program has been talked about and hashed out for over a year, we need to find resolution and do that now. I'm in favor of funding the entire amount if we fund Iowa City residents. So we are not funding those outside of the city limits. We made a commitment to only support, to not, I said that poorly, but to support those individuals who are Iowa City residents. And it's been helpful to hear some of the very understandable misunderstandings about where the Iowa City boundaries might be. But I do think we made that commitment, that our money goes to Iowa City residents. And so hopefully, the county will follow through with its, what it set forth in its rejection, that it would allow that shifting of the funds so that our money goes to Iowa City residents.
I would just like to, I mean, I'm in agreement. I'd like to sort of step back and say, this is, when you look at the bigger picture, I really don't want any of this to take away from the fact that Iowa City and Johnson County together took on almost 100% of putting this program together for the excluded workers within this county, that we both stepped up. I have great respect for those who advocated, for those who learned to advocate, for the people, for the people from Escuche Mi Voz, and for that, for that process as well. Because that's the piece that I really don't want to get lost. There ended up being, as has been, has been alluded to, politics and blame and so forth. This is a positive. We are doing something that really others have not done in this state for people who worked for all of us. And I would really like that to be the takeaway despite the difficulties of these last few weeks.
Yes, such a complicated topic when it comes down to all the ins and outs of how we got here today. But at the end of the day, I'm pretty excited to hear from my colleagues that they would be willing to support this 100%. I am of the same mindset that at this juncture, we should support it 100%. There's a great, a lot of lessons to be learned, I think that we'll remember in the future. I also want to maybe just stress the facts to a small degree, that yes, the City of Iowa City, our ARPA funds can only be used within our jurisdiction. I do understand that a lot of people didn't learn about the boundaries until this took place. I can tell you that my mom lives in Lake Ridge Mobile Home Park, and she didn't learn about the boundaries until she went to vote for her son, and she learned that she couldn't vote for me. So, because she's not in the boundary. So I do, and of course, that was very distressful. And she said, but my address, Iowa City, so I do get that. So I do understand the challenges with this from the, you know, from the public perception, you know, that's in the weeds for a lot of individuals. At least for, at least from my perception, I'll tell you that this, the funds that we're spending are the City of Iowa City Residents Fund. I think, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do it because at this point, we hear the, we know the needs, and we are willing to do what we can to meet the needs. But I also will leave the table open, we're gonna do it. I think we're gonna do it. I will leave the table open to back, we're gonna backfill Iowa City residents that were rightfully paid by the county, 319 residents that were rightfully paid by the county. So we're gonna backfill those individuals. I still open the invitation to the county to backfill us and to any other jurisdiction that want to be a part of this process. There's 11 jurisdictions in the Johnson County area. You all can also participate. Thanks to Corville for their $30,000. I don't, many people, this isn't to minimize that contribution, but their involvement was 1% of the total amount. I had our involvement, I don't have it up before me, but it was pretty significant when it comes down to the three jurisdictions that contributed. But I will be happy to submit the 100% funding for Iowa City, backfilling Iowa City residents 319, so that we can certainly move forward. And to the individuals that have endured this, you know, I wish, you know, we can turn back the hands of time, and I think there's a few things that we could have done different so that we weren't in this position. I will learn from this, and hopefully, we won't find ourselves in a similar situation that like this in the future. But nevertheless, it sounds like the majority of this council wants to keep this agenda item on the formal agenda. And we will have, during that time, I'll kind of walk us through unless our city attorney can give us some thoughts there.
Sure, happy to, Mayor. So as council knows, the resolution had a blank, not knowing what council intended to do with this item. So there would be a motion and a voice vote at the time that this formal agenda item comes up to put in the amount of 319 times $1,400, and I'll do the math ahead of that. Whoops, Jeff's already done it for me, $446,600. The other part of the motion to amend that resolution item would be to remove the reasonable incremental administrative costs, because I note that in the county's August 11th letter, they indicated that they would incur that expense and not invoice the city for that. So those would be the two subject matters of the single motion to amend, and then a roll call vote on the item itself.
Just to clarify on that, the county's still gonna charge us just shy of $10,000 in check processing fees, so we'll just add that to the 446. Does that work?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion on this item? All right, we're gonna move on, and again, thanks to everyone that's been advocating for this. We clearly heard you in. Hopefully, tonight, we will be a part of something great in so many individual lives. We're gonna move on to the next item, which is the American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Recovery Fund update.
Okay, Mayor and Council, we'll just do a transition into the larger ARPA discussion. You have a memo in your information packet from Cassie Grip, our grants manager, that gives you an overview of where we stand on your various priorities. I won't go through everything, I'll hit a few highlights, and then if you've got questions, happy to try to respond to those. So we just covered the direct payments, so we'll skip past that. On the eviction prevention front, we are having some conversations with Shelter House, who is working on a proposal to extend eviction prevention. Remember, this council's previously funded eviction prevention efforts, and those funds are still remaining and fulfilling the intended purpose. This agreement would come in and just extend the duration of that effort. I know we are also looking at possibly piloting a risk mitigation program in the community to help people find housing as well. So you can look forward to that coming, once we're able to reach an agreement on a proposal with Shelter House. The Forest View Relocation Program's been fully authorized, and you have an update in your, in your packet there. You can see that the vast majority, almost all, have received their first check, with many receiving both checks and having, have vacated their home in the Forest View neighborhood. So just as a reminder, the end of the program is December 9th, and at that point, we expect that the park owners will close. And we hope by that time, we'll have all of the residents fully funded and that our partners with the Center for Worker Justice and others will have helped them find housing opportunities that meet their needs. You can jump in if you want to talk about any of these, or I'll just run through. A couple months ago, council authorized a nonprofit assistance grant program. This is for operating dollars coming out of COVID, so kind of a recovery program. We have focused that effort on homeless assistance and housing stabilization, childcare and youth services, healthcare, including mental health services, and food assistance. Those applications were due today from our nonprofit community. So staff will be reviewing those in the coming weeks, and we will make a recommendation to you for funding at your, one of your September 22, 2022 meetings. So next month, we'll have those grants for your consideration.
Jeff, Jeff, sorry. I know that you said that today was the end date. Is there kind of a rough estimate of how many applications have come in, or is it too soon to make that ask?
Yeah, glance at Erica back here, see if she knows.
Sorry to put you on the spot, I'm just curious.
Sure, Erica Kubli with Neighborhood Services. We received 17 applications for just over $900,000 in funding.
Thank you.
We also have not returned to you yet with the wage theft agreement that you previously committed to. We are working on that, and hopefully, we'll also have that ready for you in September. So quite a bit of progress expected in this, in this category in September. When it comes to the BIPOC business support, I think, as you know, Esti planning's been working on an inclusive economic development study. Councilor Weiner and I actually had a chance to hear an update on that at our ICAD board meeting last week. They are finishing up that study and working with ICAD on some recommendations that'll be presented to not only Iowa City Council, but Johnson County and some of the other communities in Iowa City. So I think they're getting pretty close to being ready to ask us for some work session time to present their recommendations to us. On the social service capital funding, we have not yet started that program. We wanted to get through the operating grant process before starting to frame up the capital grant process. That'll be a more significant pot of funding. We'll have a recommendation to you. Our plan is to recommend the framework of that program to you in a work session, make sure you're comfortable with that, and then we'll go out and actually solicit grant applications from our nonprofit community. On the affordable housing initiatives, not much progress from the last update on this. We have had some initial conversations with the Housing Trust Fund, but are not actively drafting anything at this point. We do hope to get moving on that still yet this fall. Happy to report that much of the work with community has been completed for their expansion of their mobile crisis outreach. They have secured vehicles, hired staff, and I believe they are now in their new remodeled office space. So things are moving along really well with that project. On the workforce development side, we have kind of three different things that we're looking at right now. The first is a proposal for the, from the Iowa Labor Center for a apprenticeship program that would target underserved young adults in the community to encourage them and help them get involved into the local trades. We also are working on a regional childcare effort with Johnson County and the Business Partnership, and currently evaluating the framework for a potential wage supplement program. So really looking at how do we increase wages of childcare providers and take some of that cost burden off the parents? So allow those providers to pay the wages that we would like to see, but also not put that cost back on, on the parents themselves. So that'll take several months. I think there's gonna be some surveying of Johnson County childcare providers to help inform some of those discussions, but that is underway. And then the council knows that 4Cs has proposed a childcare navigator position. That was explained a little bit in a work session in June, and we will be following up on that as staff here in the next couple of months to see if there's an opportunity for us to play a part in that role. And then the last thing I'll mention, or two more things, sorry. Think Iowa City was the recipient of $250,000 from, from the council. Some of that was for backfilling lost revenue during COVID. And then half of that amount, $125,000, is going to tourism grants for the Iowa City community, looking to fund events in different parts of the community that can stimulate some business expenditures and hotel stays in the community. And then next month, you will have a resolution to provide some revenue replacement to our utility accounts for the period of time in which we were not charging water shut-offs, where we had a large amount of unpaid bills. We'll be looking to make those revenue, I'm sorry, those utility accounts whole through the use of a revenue replacement provision in the ARPA legislation. Okay, that's the quick recap. The more detailed memo is in your packet, but happy to try to answer questions that you have. I should also say that this is fluid. If council sees some things that staff isn't prioritizing, you want to change priorities, or you want to further discuss any of these categories, you always have the ability to revisit these and give us further directions or kind of guide changes in direction.
I think the only question I have is, I know the 4Cs came before us in a work session to propose the childcare navigator. Is that not, you know, in any of the other elements where they could apply for that? Because I think that would be most appropriate, that they apply under one of the other umbrellas, which I don't know if today's applications would have been, you know, it could have been included in there.
Yeah, I think they'd be eligible under the applications that were due today. We'll evaluate, I'm not sure if they applied or not. But we did indicate in our workforce development section that childcare would be included there. So it could be either one. We'll have to see if they're among the 17 that applied for the applications that were due today. Certainly, council can give us that direction. If you'd like to see childcare in this bucket, or that bucket, or both buckets, it's, you know, your prerogative to do so.
Right, well, I mean, the first one that you had the grants out for that were due today is for emergency nonprofit assistance. The other one is sort of more forward-looking, that struck me, and that's why it seemed like it, like the 4Cs might fit well in that, because they're not looking to backfill anything, or because they're looking to help create a structure that's going to work better going forward.
I have a question just for my colleagues. Are we interested in, you know, narrowing down even like some of these larger buckets? We certainly, you know, I think having this memo is really helpful, and maybe getting monthly updates, even if we don't talk through them, but maybe having Cassie update this memo on a regular basis would be really helpful. Even just this front page with the totals at the bottom that says, we're talking about up to $34 million, we've got, you know, 18.3. Maybe just trying to give a little more framework or direction to that? Is that something we want to do, are willing to do, could talk about doing?
Yes.
I think the answer is yes, but while I'm trying to figure out like, how do we? So yes?
And.
And. So.
I would suggest, so this memo, we intend to update after every reporting cycle. So we have to report quarterly to the, to the feds on how we're we have to report quarterly to the feds on how we're using the dollars, and our intention is then to place this in the info packet after each reporting cycle. I think after your next one, we will be pretty well closed out on direct payments to adults, the Forest View relocation. By then, I think we'll have eviction prevention probably taken care of and the emergency nonprofits. So that top tier of emergent needs should more or less be complete. And then I think that's a good time to focus in on your strategic investments a little bit more. That's where you're going to have to determine priorities and maybe even drop some buckets or lower some of those upper ranges.
Yeah, I'm also wondering to what extent, as we move forward with our council strategic planning, some of the goals that we end up really specifying, maybe in the session that will be toward the end of September, will help us really focus this and can be considered together with that.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's an important factor in trying to understand how to best use the ARPA funds. I'm always looking for what, you know, sometimes is thought of as stacked benefits, so how we can do things which do many things, because I don't think we have the funding to sort of, you know, look at things in isolation. So to the degree we can integrate and overlay some of these strategic investments, the better, I think.
Good. Thank you.
So is council comfortable with more of a quarterly update? That would also give us, you know, kind of where we are with these 17 apps that were due today as well. At least for starters, we can always change.
I think that makes sense. And then finding out with these first, like, the first tier, as Jeff was saying, get that nailed down, and then I think it's time to make some decisions on the bottom tier and sort of get that moving. I think that does make sense, so.
And as others have said, it fits in really well with our next phase of strategic planning to be able to say, yeah, what projects can be sort of brought to bear, recognizing there's also a shorter timeline on these funds than perhaps our strategic plan, but still the two can dovetail pretty well. So I think that's a great idea.
And does that kind of, I guess I want to not be dismissive, does that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. All right, we'll go with a quarterly, knowing that it'd be fluid, and we could always pull it on the agenda, you know, if we want to. All right, any other comments? I mean, there was a lot of programs or categories that we're just going through.
I'm really glad to hear that the mobile crisis expansion is basically nearly complete. That's going to help the community in many ways, and to have had that front loaded is really helpful.
And now that we have agreed in our earlier agenda item about the funding for the 319, I know it's a smaller amount than before, but what is left? And was there any discussion or thinking, I know there hasn't been discussion, has there been any thinking about where that money might be sort of slotted in with existing?
Sure. So if you look at that front cover of the memo, which is on page nine of the 811 packet, we've always presented these, I call them buckets, categories with ranges on them. And the range was really on the very low end is kind of what we have funds for. It's roughly the $18 million. And the upper end was kind of some of those stretch goals and those categories potentially. And that was, we put that upper end, it ended up at, right now, at $34 million, knowing we didn't have $34 million, but that we could maybe potentially leverage funds from other entities, whether it's other grant sources or partnerships with the county. We thought that we might be able to do that. So when you look at the direct payments, and we thought initially we might spend up to $1.5 million on that, we're going to end up spending about $1.2 presumably, based on where you indicated you'll go tonight. That extra $300,000 is simply going to filter down into one of those buckets, right? So if you determine on the capital grant side that you want to be closer to $5 million than $4, well, that $300,000 will be there to support that effort or to bolster affordable housing efforts. So it doesn't get lost. It's going to fit in one of these categories, but I hesitate to say we're going to assign it to a particular category.
And then, I don't know that there was, I mean, I made the suggestion, because I understand that staff mentioned they were going to get back to 4CEs to kind of help them figure out where to go. I just wanted to make sure that maybe I'm clear on what's going to happen, what staff will do with 4CEs.
Yeah. Well, my impression from your last work session was that there was some support for working to try to bridge that gap that was described. We were intentionally waiting until this grant program that we launched concluded to see if that was the applica, if they applied, and if that application rose to the top. If it doesn't, we're probably going to engage them in discussions to say, what does this look like? Are there other funding partners potentially that we could look to, whether that be other municipalities, and just have that discussion with 4CEs. By all means, if council wants us to kind of pump the brakes on that a little bit, we can. But I sensed that there was some interest, and childcare is one of those things that we called out specifically. So we had kind of an overall umbrella for nonprofit support, but we mentioned mobile crisis, we mentioned childcare, we mentioned apprenticeship programs specifically in some of our initial planning. So where we mentioned those specific objectives, staff's under the direction that we can go and kind of pursue those. So they might feel like they're coming to you as one-off projects. That's really not our intention. It's really just responding to those early decisions that were made.
So maybe I heard your question, I think I heard you state, as you were talking about 4CEs, you know, they're going to be, you're going to have to figure out a way to work with them, I think, essentially, and then if council wanted to, you know, give a different direction. I guess I just heard, like, you're not sure what you were going to do, but it sounds like you do have a plan, and somewhat of a plan, and there's other buckets of funding that they could qualify under. So based on what you just said, no, I don't know that, I retract what I stated, and it sounded like you all will be fine navigating. And childcare, absolutely, this council has highlighted as a huge issue, so I'll just retract what I stated. It sounded like you're going to be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, with respect to childcare, I was also very gratified to hear that we and the county together are looking at a wage support program, because the wages are the 800-pound gorilla, essentially, that the governor's task force really tried to address, but then none of those recommendations were taken. And they can, they have grants for facilities, but it doesn't matter if you have a facility if you can't find the qualified staff. And that's, it's basically the building blocks of the workforce. If we can't, if people can't get childcare, as I can tell you in detail right now, from personal experience, it really, it impacts your ability to do anything at all. And in addition to what you're talking about, I think there's at least, there's at least one other aspect, which is, and that may play into what you and the county are talking about, which is looking at the, those who are getting childcare assistance, and the difference between those childcare assistance grants and what the childcare's need to charge in order to be able to survive, because it's, you know, it's a personnel-heavy business.
Yep.
And the more of those people we can help as well, the better off everyone in this community will be.
Any other comments on this agenda item? Information packet discussion, August 4. Information packet discussion, August 11.
With respect to IP5, the pending city council work session topics, the land acknowledgement was on it for a while and fell off. I think we had at least three people who were willing to discuss it. I'd be grateful if we still do to get it back on.
And I'm not exactly sure how that fell off, but it certainly.
It's number nine.
I think it's on there.
Yeah, it is on, okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
The list is getting long. It's hard to.
Well, there are a couple, there are a couple of them that we could probably take care of in short order.
Yep, sorry about that, yeah.
In terms of, I know that it's down on the list, however, there's a lot of interest about it, and we were only presented with an initial set of kind of proposals and whatnot, along with a lot of feedback from the public, but I do think it makes sense for us to talk again about the Parks and Rec master plan.
Yeah.
Again, I know that, I'm sorry, I know that this is something also that you guys have been charged with doing some work on, so maybe I'm speaking too.
Yeah, our intention is certainly to come back to you on that. The Parks Commission itself is currently working through this in two phases. The first is the non-aquatic parts of the plan, so that's your ball fields, your tennis courts, and gyms and things like that. They started that conversation at their August meeting. I don't think they were able to finish that.
Yeah.
Then they'll transition to the aquatics piece, and then it'll come back to you, so.
Thanks for the clarification.
I think because of the volume of public input, it's probably going a little slower than we initially thought it might, but that's okay. We're getting a lot of input, a lot of interest. We need to take our time, and we'll return to you maybe this fall.
Thanks for the clarification, and I forgot about that, that, yeah, they didn't even get to talking about it, because of quorum, so anyway, thank you for that.
We're going to move on, if nothing else, with August 11 info packet. We're going to move on to University of Iowa Student Government Updates, USG. We're going to welcome you all back. I know you have some updates, because I've been seeing a lot of more people in our streets.
Yeah, absolutely. How are y'all, council? I hope you're doing.
Hello.
Um, just to start out, like you mentioned, the school year is beginning, and so we are, the academic year begins August 22 with a large incoming class. Not only was Parkland reopened, of course, but also three dorms had their housing options expanded, so that was pretty crazy. We hope to partner with the city to make this year great for the university and community, of course. Through this, we hope to, we've been revisiting our platform highlights, and the governmental relations committee hopes to especially focus on advertising more involvement opportunities with community organizations. We're going to be working on, working with the bicyclists of Iowa City on ambassadorship programs, as well as our finance committee is revisiting the way that they allow for student organization funding and accessibility to that. Additionally, we will be coordinating, we're focusing on coordinating with campus partners to provide voter registration opportunities, as well as increasing student engagement among the student body, so. Could you?
Some, sorry, some of our other initiatives, our sustainability committee is working to bring back on Iowa tours of the Iowa City Farmers Market, and will be at the Sustainability Open House with the bicyclists of Iowa City. The event runs from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Friday, August 19, on the lawn between Jessup and McBride Hall.
Y'all are all welcome to come, and please do. So that's all for right now, but thank you.
Can you repeat the date of what?
Sorry?
Can you repeat the date of the?
Oh, yeah, it's August 19. It will be this Friday, so.
Thank you. Council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees?
There was, as Jeff indicated, there was an ICAD board meeting last Friday. There was a really excellent presentation by Estieg Planning, and they are, that dovetails, they also had a presentation by the new head of Better Together, Katie Gerlock, about the Better Together 2030, or whatever they ended up calling that project here, which dovetails really well with the ECOCOG, with the ECOCOG 2030 project, which I also sat in a meeting on last week and is in the process of being rolled out. They fit very well together, and I'm hoping that, especially since we as a council have now sort of also worked on strategic planning with Karen Kurt of ECOCOG, that all these plans will be able to mesh and benefit from the staffing that we have at ECOCOG here at the city, as well as Katie Gerlock now taking the reins there. And on other things, I, there was mention of apprenticeship programs. I was able to go on the apprenticeship tour that was offered to all council members up in Cedar Rapids, where we went to, I think, four different, four different locations, carpenters, electricians, workers, and, right, it's really, just really impressive programs and availability. Don't try and be an electrician, there's a huge waiting list, everybody else has room, but in terms of ability and excellent programs for not only young people who don't, who would like to have a career that doesn't necessarily involve college, the opportunities are there.
If no more updates, we will be adjourned until 6:00 PM. We'll see you soon.